I am the ISD superintendent and also the interim superintendent for Muskegon Heights. Everyone says, "Yeah, you've seen me on paper." There's been a lot of stuff going on at the Heights. Tonight, we wanted to make sure that folks have an opportunity to ask questions and that we can share information. So, the purpose of this evening is really to try and answer as many questions as we can. And I think in the flyer that went out, you saw that we're gonna probably spend until about 7:15 trying to answer questions. And if we don't get to everyone's question tonight, we're going to post the questions and answers on the district website. So that we will try and answer as many things as we can. Hopefully, you got a flyer that, a handout that has questions and answers on it already. This is something that we prepared for the press and we prepared for the parents of Muskegon Heights and the staff, just to try and answer as many questions as we can. I want to tell you that tonight we have media with us. So, just to let you know, because sometimes people don't realize that they're our media presence. And we certainly thank the media for being here as well. Because we're all trying to tell a story. And it's a story about sort of where we're at right now. So, the purpose of tonight is to share information, is to try and answer questions, but also to tell about some of the good things that are happening at the Heights. That, you know, we tend to focus on just the negative because there's been so much information that has come out since, I mean, the first of the year, especially when it comes to the finances. And we have tried to be as transparent as we can, giving information to folks. But that information sometimes changes very quickly. So, this situation has been pretty fluid over the last six weeks. But tonight, really, I want to share with you that there are good, good things happening. Just to give a few things. First of all, and these are in just sort of random order. There's a new roof on the middle school. You know? We went ahead and put a new roof on the middle school. That's, I think, positive. The Head Start and Great Start readiness programs, questions have come up about those programs. They're gonna be here for a long, long time. Some folks have asked me if those programs are going away. Not at all. The Great Start readiness program and the Head Start program will be at the Heights next year. Another piece, the state police investigation that certainly caught the eye of a lot of people last March. That investigation has ended. And the state police are not pursuing the investigation any longer. It has been turned over to the U.S. Department of Education, which is pretty typical because the things that were in question were federal funds. And so, the U.S. Department of Education oversees all the federal funds. So, I think that's a really good piece of news that sometimes gets lost in the shuffle of all the bad things that we read about. We have some students at Muskegon Heights that have won some Career Tech Center awards. There were, back on January 21st, there were 55 Muskegon area Career Tech Center health students that competed in a variety of healthcare skills and leadership events during the Health Occupation Students in America Leadership Conference at Baker College. There were over 300 students that competed. Forty-four Career Tech Centers won medals that day, including two students from Muskegon Heights, from the high school. And those students are now eligible to participate in state competitions. And they are silver medalists was Chantoria Donson in physical therapy. And bronze medalist, Aneah Mack from, in the physical therapy event. And bronze medalist, Mary Rose, in the medical spelling event. So, there are reasons to be proud of Muskegon Heights students. Yeah, yep. And on top of that, Garrett Gollings. Yes, Garrett Gollings also finished in the top 10 in sports medicine. So, salute to Garrett. You know, reflecting back on last March when the state police came in, the question came about, is our Title I program in compliance? And we had some issues to work through. But I want to tell you that as of today, Title I program is in complete compliance. And we work with the Michigan Department of Education. Pretty much, we have phone conferences every Wednesday just to touch base with them. That's a good thing, good things are happening. I want to share with you that our special education program that has a lot of students on the waiting list to be tested, we have recently contracted some people to get that done and to come back into special ed compliance. That's great news because we slipped out of it, we're working our way back. I want to tell you that Chartwell is our food service company, who is one of the vendors that we owe some substantial money to. We have made payments to them and they said, "You know, we will work with you and continue servicing your school district from here on out." So, there are good things that are happening. We're getting some of the finances in order. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but we are getting some things in order and we feel good about that. So, folks, there's a reason to be happy and proud of Muskegon Heights. And we need to celebrate those things. And that's part of the reason tonight, there are good things that are happening. I have a couple of people that I would like to share some thoughts with you tonight. And the first one is somebody that I think all of you know. He does have to teach a class tonight, so I'm gonna put him on first. I'm gonna ask Judge Pittman to come up and say a few words.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, friends of Muskegon Heights Public Schools. How are you, everybody? Okay? This is not a wake. In spite of how we may feel and how we may react. This is not a wake, ladies and gentlemen, this is a wake-up. It's a wake-up call. This is an opportunity for you to, instead of getting your information secondhand, and I am not here to disparage the media. They have a job to do, they do their job. But instead of getting your information secondhand, this is your opportunity to get questions asked and answered directly. To get the information directly from the leadership that is attempting to shepherd this school district from its current difficulties into its next future. So, I would really, I would really caution you or for you to take advantage of the opportunity to ask those questions tonight, to dispel some of the myriad rumors that are probably floating around this community. You know, when tough, difficult things happen, it's always very easy for naysayers to begin to get moving and start in with the absolute worst case scenario and to create a whole lot of negative info about where things are going to go. Here's what I do know. I'm not involved directly with what's going on with the ISD, but I do think I'm a bit uniquely positioned. I have been a member of this Muskegon Heights Public Schools Board. As a matter of fact, I was on the board the last time we were in some crisis. And we were able to come out of that pretty well, way back in 1992, starting to date this. And I've also served on the intermediate school district for a period of time. So, I noticed at least some of the issues from both ends of that particular spectrum. I also know a few folks in Lansing. I'm not deliberately to talk about who they are or what they are. But I do know that these people in Lansing, in spite of what you may believe or what you may have heard, are not waking up every day with the idea of how quickly can we shut Muskegon Heights Public Schools down. That is not what their mission is, that's not what their intent is. And quite frankly, from what I have, the discussions I've had, that is certainly not what they want to have to happen. Ladies and gentlemen, let's not kid ourselves, gotta keep it real. The, you know, the true emotion of the idea that our school district is in peril has butted up against the idea that on the ledger sheet, things don't add up. Things are not looking like they need to look in order for this school district to continue its viability and certainly not for it to continue to look the way we have traditionally known it to look. So, it's time to pull our heads out of the sand and get ready for the idea that Muskegon Heights Public Schools, in my opinion, based on what I know, and I'm not asking Superintendent Sipka, he's gotta take a whole different approach to this thing because he's got a whole different role in this thing. But from what I understand, Muskegon Heights Public Schools is going to survive. It's going to be. But it won't look like it used to look. And if there are people who are still of the opinion that things are going to be able to continue as they have in the past, you are sadly and woefully mistaken. It's not going to happen. So, it's time for us to start accepting the reality of the fact that we're going to have to do business differently here at Muskegon Heights. And it's going to be harder before it gets better. Gentlemen that I admire greatly, our current president gave us that message a few years ago when he was elected to his office. And it came true, and it's also a fact, that things in this country at some minimal level are starting to turn a corner. And just as that corner is going to be turned, some of this corner will be turned. But it won't be turned by you, me, and those who care about this school district sitting with our heads in the sand and refusing to accept the realities of what is going to come. So, I would implore you to this aspect, that our focus is not on a bunch of the fights that we seem to be hearing need to be fought. I'm not really concerned about whether or not the media is or is not being fair with us. Doesn't matter. I am not really concerned about whether or not other school districts do or do not want to lean in and help and accept, you know, the idea that they might have to assist Muskegon Heights students somewhere down the line. It's not my fight. My focus, I think our focus, has to be what is it that we do every day to make sure that the leadership that is shepherding this matter along has the support that it needs to be able to move this school district from its current state to its next state? That's what this has got to be about, ladies and gentlemen. It's got to be about more than sitting in corners and barber shops and beauty shops and wherever else you're sitting and speaking negative and anticipating worse and pulling students away and teachers giving up while they're in classrooms and administrators giving a half effort. If that's what we're going to do, let's shut the door today and let's quit playing. But if you're serious about the idea that you want to see Muskegon Heights Public Schools survive, then I think you are because you'd be doing a whole lot of other things today than being here today, showing your support. Then we need to start figuring out what it is that we can do, boots on the ground, to assist, to hold up the arms of those who have to go to Lansing and fight this fight with people who I honestly think are willing to fight the fight with us. But they need to know that there is something more going on. They need to know that the effort is here. They need to know that the people here in Muskegon Heights and the friends of Muskegon Heights Public Schools are going to continue to not only do what's necessary to right the ship now, but to continue to do what's necessary to maintain the ship on the proper course. It takes more than showing up at the school board meeting when it's a hot issue. It takes more than a board that simply rubber stamps whatever's put in front of it by a superintendent. It takes more than trying to make sure that everybody's happy and nobody has to take any sacrifice when times call for somebody to take the sacrifice. We gotta grow up. We have to get bigger about how we conduct business in the city of Muskegon Heights and Muskegon Heights Public Schools in particular. We have to live within our means. We have to appreciate that this school district is not here as a source of employment, but instead as a citadel and a receptacle for students to be able to come, to be educated, to go out and to compete in the world. That's the primary goal of Muskegon Heights Public Schools. It's not to get the hookup, to be able to get a job because nobody else will hire you. I'm sorry, but that's just not what this is all about. And there are points in time where those decisions are going to butt up. Those decisions are going to butt up against what we would hope and want to be accomplished versus what can be accomplished. Please, ladies and gentlemen, take the opportunity tonight to ask this man directly and those board members that they're going to be involved with, the questions that you have been asking yourself or others who have as little information as you, the person right next to you knows as little as you. These are the people who know a little bit more about what's going on. They may not be at liberty to say everything that he wants to say about this circumstance. But I'm here to tell you that what I think is gonna happen, if it amounts to anything, based on what I know, is Muskegon Heights Public Schools is going to survive. We're going to see this. So, I'm gonna sit down and not go laborious pointing and allow folks to have more time to ask their questions. But thank you for listening to me, thank you for hearing what I have to say. Let's maintain our focus. Let's maintain our focus. Our focus has to be getting the class of 2012 graduated and opening the doors for the class of 2013 to 2014.
Thank you, Judge Pittman. Great words.
No, I think it's your turn.
Great advice. The questions, before I introduce our next speaker, and there are just a couple of speakers because we do want to get to the questions. But as you came in, you were handed a sheet, hopefully, that has some questions and answers on it, but then another sheet, a half sheet, that has room for a question or two. And then also ideas. Because tonight is about empowering you to be part of the solution to make sure that next year and the year after that and 10 and 20 years from now, Muskegon Heights is a great school district. It's better than we are today, and we're working to that. So, Pastor Greer will be coming up shortly. As he speaks, if you have a question, ask me to write it down. After he speaks, I'm gonna ask if you do have a question. You're gonna hold it up, we've got some folks that are gonna come around and they're gonna take those questions from you. And then, I think Rosie Holmes is gonna help us out tonight in sort of sorting through some of the questions to make sure that they're not repeated over and over again. And with that, those are the directions for how we're gonna handle the questions. Right now, I'd ask Pastor Samuel Greer to come up and share a few thoughts with us. Pastor Greer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have any particular connections with anybody in any place, anybody in any governmental position, anybody in legislature or anything. My connection is the fact that the superintendent has invited a number of pastors to simply share with him about his concerns. He's had several meetings with a number of clergy to give us an opportunity to address our congregations in an informative way that can speak to the needs of the children of our community. And that's my, that's my goal tonight. I want to speak about that little boy that attends Queen Esther Church, that little girl that attends Greater Harvest, that little boy that goes to Corinthians, that little girl who goes to Christ Temple, that little girl who goes over to John Wesley. I want to talk about them tonight and why this meeting is not about any other effort but other than them. They are a group of children in our community who simply want to know what it means to be a child of excellence, a student of excellence. What does it mean to graduate with pride? What does it mean to graduate with enthusiasm? What does it mean to move from elementary to high school? There are a number of students who go to all of our areas who simply have this as their goal, the opportunity to go to school another day. I'm very thankful to the superintendent that he's permitted a number of us to visit with him to think about how we can help facilitate that. For some reason, we've been always thought that there is such a chasm between faith and education. And the reality is, education is faith and faith is education. The reality is that we are bound together by a common good. And that common good transcends all of that. That common good is the well-being of brotherhood. The common good is what makes us one, what makes us unique. So, I'm here tonight, not because of anything else other than the fact that I'm here for the common good of every child that's a part of our community. And not only am I here for that, I believe in my heart that you are here as well. Sometime, when you want to hear good stuff, usually if you're a preacher, you go to the barber shop because immediately, when you get in the barber shop, they start talking about preachers. So, Saturday, I went down to the barber shop because I had on the Bull Arm of God and I knew they were gonna talk about preachers. So, stepped in the barber shop and immediately conversation got on preachers. While I was there, I was able to kind of shift the conversation to what are we doing about the young men and young women of our community? And when I left there, a young boy came out of the shop who's a member of this school. And he said this, he said, "Can I come on to the church to see you?" It's about maybe 5:30, 6 o'clock, he came on to the church to see me. He brought me a paper that he had written in school. And on that paper, he had entitled it, "What I Want to Do." And on this paper, you would have thought he would have talked about all that he want to be, all that he wants to get, all of the places that he wants to go. And here's what he says. "Here's what I want to be, all that I can be." "Here's what I want to be, all that I can be." I said to the people at the Queen Esther Church Sunday, "Are we helping our students to be all that they can be?" So, I'm here tonight to ask you to join with me to move from this informational setting tonight to go back to our local places, wherever that may be. I'm asking you tonight, after we've moved from this informational meeting, if you would help me and others to go back to our area and fulfill the request that this young man had on his paper. Here's my desire, to be all that I can be. That's, I think, that's the call and the challenge of Muskegon Heights Public Schools. Will everybody be a valiant warrior? None. Will everybody be a star quarterback? None. But can we make and enable people to be all that they can be? I think the answer is yes. Would you join with us to help fulfill what that young man wrote on his paper? The desire to be all that I can be? Thank you so much.
Wow. How do you find those two guys? We, it's about 6:35 now. We do want to take time for the questions. That's one of the reasons why you're here. So, I want to thank Judge Pittman, Pastor Greer for your great words of inspiration. And that's what we have to do, is to inspire. Inspired comes from the Latin word, "inscito," which means to breathe into. And that's what we want to do, breathe into our kids that sense of excellence. So, thank you. Hold up your questions if you have them. And we're gonna have some folks come around. Got a number of people that are gonna try and take them and bring them down. I'm gonna tell you ahead of time, I may not have all the answers tonight. I wish I knew everything that is going to happen. But while we're waiting, you know, information came out today about AYP and about the new cut scores and all. You know, another reason to celebrate is Edgewood and the middle school both made AYP. High school did not make AYP. After yearly progress. So, those are important steps to reinventing Muskegon Heights. And with that, we're gonna jump in with any question right now. Thank you. Question is, what can I do as a resident of the Heights to help the school district? I have gotten a lot of those kinds of questions. What can I do, what more can I do? If you are a parent, please make sure your kids are in school every day and that they are doing their homework. are doing their homework. That they're doing their homework, that they're reading every day. So we need to provide reading material for the kids, whether they're elementary students or whether they're high school students. One of my passions is, as an ISD superintendent, is trying to make sure that we have secondary school kids that are reading every day. Because when secondary school kids get to middle school or high school, oftentimes we don't have those reading classes anymore. So if you're a parent, please try and make sure that there is reading material in your house. Go to the library, ask the school, anything that you can get. Geez, even by the ground I hold it. If you are, if you're not a parent, if you are just a community member and you say, what more can I do? Our kids need role models and mentors. They need people to look up to. They need African-American role models. They need Caucasian role models. They need this. We are in this together and they need people to look up to. They need folks to mentor them, to guide them through the difficult times in their lives. So I would encourage you to get involved with the schools, to contact the school principals, to ask, you know, is there something that I can do to come in? We have, here's another great thing that's happening, the middle school library reopened. Yeah. If you're a volunteer in the library, any volunteers in here tonight in the library? We have a number of people who have come forward and they said, we're going to, we're going to keep the library open. That is a tremendous thing. And so I would encourage you to reach out and do those kinds of things here in the community. Also, offer your advice, you know, don't stop asking questions or sharing ideas. And we're going to take these ideas and try and put them together, review them, and see if there are really some things that we can do based on your suggestions. Question, schools of choice begins. What are we going to do about keeping our children in place? This is a question that came up at the board meeting the other night and I answered, I don't think satisfied a lot of people, but it is good education is going to keep our kids in place. But it, yes, it is also, it is also parents who need to make a commitment to this school district, to hang in there during the tough times and help make us a better school district this year and next year and every year on out after this. Because folks, we're already planning on next year. We're, we're planning every day now for what will happen next year. So I would speak to your neighbors, your relatives, folks that you go to church with, everyone in the community that you can that has a child, and encourage them to hang in the Heights. There's just great education that's taking place here. And unfortunately, in times like this, of times of financial stress, that's what we focus on. And we need to focus on the good things that are happening in our classrooms every day. Another question, will the school survive till the end of the school year? See, there are probably 200 of you that were asking that question. And the answer is, we have so many people that are working to make sure that this school district survives, not just this year, but from here on out. And you're going to hear that from the other ones. It is not, it is the staff of this school. It is the parents of the school that are working. It's the school board. It is the ISD. It is a number of organizations within the state, Michigan Association of School Administrators, Michigan Association of School Boards, Middle Cities School Association, that are going to bat for Muskegon Heights. We have, we have had a number of conversations with what I call the higher-ups in Lansing. About 10 days ago, I met with the Speaker of the House, Jase Bolger, in his office in Lansing. We just talked about the Muskegon Heights. He said, you got 15 minutes. He gave me a half hour. Because he said, Dave, is, is the Heights ready to change? And I said, yes, they are. He said, okay, we will work to make sure that the Heights stays as a school district. I met with Dr. Mike Flanagan twice one day. Actually, it was about two weeks ago now. And he is the State Superintendent of Education. And we specifically talked in both meetings about the Muskegon Heights. And he asked the question, the same question that Speaker of the House, Bolger, asked me. And that is, are the people ready to accept the changes that might have to be made? And I said, yes. I said, the community members so want to keep the school district. I said, if you walk in the hallways of any of the schools and look at the faces of kids, whether they're little tykes or whether they're six foot seven, they, we have any students that are six foot seven? They should be playing basketball. If you look into the faces of kids who had a red age, you realize that they are worth fighting for. And he looked at me and he said, okay. He said, will they happen? Hopefully, that answers your question somewhat. The bottom line is, can I give you any guarantees tonight? No, we got a lot of stuff to work through. Do I think the school district is going to make it? I wouldn't be up here telling you that we're working on it so that we not only end this year, but we're here next year and that we're already planning on next year. If it, if it wasn't true, we are working to make sure that happens. It was, I think it was Derek Collins that, at the, at a meeting back in December, Derek is pretty eloquent student, senior this year here, I think it was Derek that I put my arm around, he asked the question, he said, you know, will I be able to graduate from here? And I put my arm around him and I said, yes. And I committed still. How can the families get involved? As far as writing letters, this is a great question. Who do we need to work with and what do we need to write? We need to contact our state legislators. People ask all the time, you know, how do you get into this financial mess? When I spoke with Speaker of the House, Bolger, he looked at me, he goes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't want to hear that, you know, we're not paying schools enough, we're not giving them enough money. And I put up my hands and I said, that's part of it. So we need to contact our legislators and beg them in whatever words that you have to, to make sure that they're funding schools properly. Schools were cut several hundred dollars over the last few years. And while the governor is, he says that he's putting some of the money back, that money comes with some strings. So he's not increasing the foundation allowance by which we build our budgets. What he is doing is he's putting forth some, he and the legislature are putting forth some incentive money. So school districts will have to jump through some hoops. And some of them are very good. Some of them I really question whether they're fair or not. But please, the legislature needs to hear from you. Because when they hear from you, they equate each letter to like 20 different people who are thinking the same thing. So we do need to send them letters. I appreciate that. And what we can do too is post on the website, the addresses and the names of the people that you need to contact. So thank you for the question. It has been mentioned that school will look different explained. Well, if you, if you saw the numbers of students that we have now, it's about 1,287. At one time, Muskegon Heights was over 3,000 kids. So we have, we have shrunk in terms of our student population. What school districts across the state are doing, when they have lower class sizes or lower student populations, they have to adjust to that. 80 to 85% of any school district's budget is in people. Why? Because we're people business. I like to hit the legislature's up the wrong side of the head sometimes because I don't think they get that when they fund schools. When funding is cut and when school populations go down, that typically means that we have to adjust the number of employees that work for a district. And I think Judge Pittman alluded to that, that, you know, we, we have to downsize. I heard the same thing in a conversation that I had with John Felsky, the superintendent of the Muskegon Public. You know, and John had said, we're a school district of about 4,700 students. He said, in some ways, we're still operating as if we had 11,000 students. So they're faced with some significant budget concerns as well. So it will look different in terms of possibly realigning some of the school buildings again, maybe changing transportation patterns. Staff, staffing will be different. You know that we, one of the recommendations for the board, the board accepted was to privatize. Nobody likes to privatize. Ask anyone in any school district that's had to do that and ask them if they wanted to do it. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But we're being forced to tighten our belts. And what we're trying to do is keep it out of the classroom. It's not always easy and as a result, you can suffer. And it's very unfair. But those are some ways that school will probably look different. Uh, let's see. Why do you think the community has not rallied to help Muskegon Heights Public Schools out? I don't know how to answer that question because you are the community. And so what you heard tonight is, yeah, we have to stand up and do what we can and tighten our belt, face the hard facts. But I, I think just the fact that there are probably 250 people here tonight shows that there are concerns. And for every person that's here, there's probably another person that would have liked to have been here tonight. So I think there are a lot of ways that community members can help out and have a desired Let's see. As a commercial property owner, a business in the Heights District, I currently pay approximately $1,800 per year for operating and debt reduction. I have no family attending the Heights School and have no voting privileges. If I cannot cover my costs, I need to close. How long will I be responsible for operating and debt reduction costs? These dollars are hurting my bottom line. That's a great question. It's a question that pops up in every community, every community that I've ever worked in or been associated with. Businesses in communities oftentimes are the backbone, the financial backbone. But also, so are the residents. All of you are paying for this facility and the lights. All of you are paying. The Muskegon Heights has a mortgage rate of 12.5, I think, which is a very, very steep tax rate. And you're all going, y'all, yeah, tell me about it. And the question is, you know, for business owners, is the investment worth it? Paying taxes, you know, what do they say? There are two things that everybody has in their lives, taxes and death, you know? Is your investment into Muskegon Heights worth it? And my answer is absolutely. Muskegon Heights Public Schools is important to this community. But well beyond that, it's not just important to, to this four-square-mile area, it's important to the whole county. The whole state is watching us. My aunt passed away last week. She was my godmother as well. So on Friday, I had to speak at her funeral. And afterwards, went to a luncheon and I sat down with folks I didn't know and I introduced myself. And they said, where are you from? And I said, from, from Muskegon County. And they said, Sam, what's going on with the Heights? And we were in St. John's, Michigan, north of Lansing. I think everybody has read about the Heights. And everybody is concerned about what is happening here. Because folks, I want to tell you that what's happening here is going to happen over and over again in the state of Michigan. There are 50 school districts somewhere in the area, 50 school districts that are in deficit spending now. And what districts are they? Oftentimes, they are the urban districts. And oftentimes, they're the African-American districts. Why? Because many of our urban areas have lost so much industry and business that have moved out that the residents are left to pick up the entire town. So whoever wrote this question, you know, I, I asked, how long will I, I have to do this? Get down on my knees and thank you for doing what you're doing. I realize that it's a sacrifice. But I, on behalf of everybody here, I appreciate it. If someone was compelled to, wanted to get involved, who should they talk to? And can we form committees tonight? You know, one of the things that came up, I think, at the board meeting the other night was about, you know, even possibly forming a public relations committee to, to really spread the good news about Muskegon Heights. If you would, on one of the answer sheets or one of the question sheets, if you would like to be on a committee to help out, please include that in your ideas or we can have a sign sheet here afterwards with, if you put your name and your telephone number. The other thing is, tell us what you can do, what you would like to do. Because there are some people, you know, not to get too familiar, but St. Paul said, you know, we, we all have different gifts. And whatever your gift is, you can give back. Some of you are, are great writers. Some of you are great at fundraising. Some of you are, are great at athletics. Some of you can, are just great at stuffing envelopes or, or helping out in those small ways. Please indicate what you can do and we'll try and put some committees together. Don't you think that asking staff members to take a 35% pay cut is excessive considering that teachers took a 3% cut in 2010? And that refers to, I think, that they had to pay in for their retirement. And will be taking a 4% cut in their retirement benefits? Yeah. It sucks. Absolutely. Absolutely. Here's the reason why they were asked to do that, though. The state of Michigan, the Department of Education demands that, demands that Muskegon Heights put together a deficit reduction plan, a deficit elimination plan. And so it is necessary to put a plan together that does effectively eliminate the deficit. Muskegon Heights has submitted several deficit elimination plans to the state. And what has happened is they haven't been able to hold up their end of the bargain. So over the last couple of months, starting when I think we got involved back in December, they said, "You need to submit a deficit elimination plan that works, and that gets you out of debt in a short amount of time." So we submitted a deficit elimination plan that would show us getting out of debt in about five years, that we would slowly work on that. We were contacted last Friday, I think, and the plan that we submitted, they responded, "It's not good enough. You need to get out of debt in three years." That explains why we asked for a thirty-five percent cut. If I'm a teacher, is it fair? It doesn't feel like it at all. Not at all. Because you know that our teachers work hard. They, they are the sort of the surrogate parents during the school day. And they deserve to be paid well. But in order to fulfill a deficit elimination plan, we had to ask for those significant cuts. Now, here is the stick behind turning in a deficit elimination plan. If you, if we didn't turn a deficit elimination plan in that showed us getting out of debt in three years, the state was going to withhold our state aid payment. The state aid payment comes to us, it's about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars each month. And that's our operating money. That's how we pay people. That's how we pay for lights, the paper, and textbooks. If we didn't submit a plan, we were told that the state aid payment would be withheld. If the state aid payment is withheld, turn the lights off, close the door. So, so that is my explanation for why. And just, it stinks that we would have to even ask that. But that, that is becoming the reality, I think, across the state, that school districts that are in financial trouble are asking their staff to make sacrifices because eighty to eighty-five percent of budgets are people. Can the community ask for fundraisers to help the school out of debt? You know, I don't want to sound sarcastic. Fundraisers are great. We have a lot of fundraisers going on already at the Heights. But that, that won't solve the problem. That is a, that is a, really a small fix. For instance, the Alumni Association, they wanted to raise money to, to put music, art, and phys ed back in school. And I applaud them. You should too. And they were hoping to collect money from each of the graduating classes. And I tried to put it in perspective, and I, you know, I hope that they continue to work on that. But even if, if each class contributed a thousand dollars, and you had sixty years of graduating classes, collect that money. Sixty thousand dollars might put one teacher back in for a year when you consider salary, benefits, FICA, and all, and retirement. So fundraisers are great, they would have to be really significant. This isn't a question, but this is a question that was asked of me. Does anybody know Oprah? And it might sound funny, but people said, you know, can't, couldn't we try and contact those who are millionaires or billionaires? And I think we will do anything. So if, if you know how to contact her, you know, be my guest, and I will sign my name alongside yours. Let's see. Will the secretaries still lose their jobs on the twenty-fourth since privatization company withdrew? Yes, this question is, the, as we sought bids for privatization, a company called PCMI had received the bid and the board approved that. And really, after looking at the financial condition of the district, PCMI came back and said, "You know what? We can't work with you because we're not sure that we will get paid." They know that there is a list of vendors. So, so we're going, we're communicating, working with a second company, which is PESG out of Caledonia, that really works with almost all of the school districts or a vast majority of school districts in the state of Michigan now. So, to answer the question specifically, we are working to, to make that happen. We're not sure that the twenty-fourth is the date that it can happen by. And we certainly will let the secretaries know about what's happening. Will we be able to sell any of the buildings that are presently vacant or properties by the school system? You know, that is an idea. I'm not, that's a board decision. And it's not certainly mine, the ISDs or anybody else. These are your buildings. So the question is, could we sell them? The answer is, yes, you could. Some school districts are doing that. They are selling the properties that are yours. I think that probably answers that. What would draw people to our district without specials or anything to offer students on top of their education? It's a great question, because it's a hard one to answer. How do you attract kids to a school district that doesn't have the specials? You know, I think all of us sitting here would love to see music, art, and phys ed put back in. Am I right? For, for the kids' sake, certainly. And I have to applaud the teachers because I know that they are trying to fill in those areas. But that, that means that the teachers don't get a break either then during the course of the day. And so that's, that's really difficult, even just, just a walk-away mental break. But I, I agree. I think we're going to have to work to make sure that those specials come back to the district. And that may be a process that can't happen this year. I'm not sure that it can happen next year. But we certainly have to continue working to try and get those specials back. And not only those specials, but other programs that we can offer some of our kids. And they may be volunteer programs. The math and science-centered programs, right? Last year, you know, I think we lost some students because of that. But again, these programs are run by people. People lost money. And so that's what we're faced with this year at least. And we're going to continue working to get out of that. Why did it take so long to make real cuts? I'm not sure how to answer that one either, except that you all know, it's tough to make cuts. Nobody knows. Just like I said, it's horrible. Nobody wants to make those cuts. And, and I know that Dr. Bryant, you know, had said that we're probably overstaffed. He spoke to me about it as well. And not just this past year, but a couple of years ago already. So I think he understood that, that we needed to cut back. Why has it taken us this long? Because nobody wants to do it. It's some of you who are sitting here who are going to lose your jobs. And nobody wanted to do that. I don't know if that's a good answer or not. But, but that, to me, is the truthful answer. It's just tough to make these decisions. My, my suggestion is, I've, I've been through, worked through low times with a lot of school districts. And to become divisive and to point fingers really doesn't help at this point. I think what you're seeing tonight, what you've seen over the last few weeks, are groups of people and individuals wanting to come forward to really make substantive changes. And that started with board. Based on the current situation, why should anybody remain on board? I think that's another board question. Can we get an email address to send ideas? Great. We will work, but we'll put an email address up on the website. And, and you can submit your ideas there. So again, Kristen Tank asking, she's helping out on that one. Why a takeover? Why not a helping hand? That's a great question, too. Emergency managers, there's a lot of debate in the state of Michigan right now over their role, whether they're needed, whether they should even happen. In this situation, our board looked at the facts and got, I think, a really broad picture of what was happening financially, and decided that in order to save the district, we had to take drastic measures. And that was not a popular decision even among board members. I think they, they really struggled with this. But ultimately, they came down and said, "You know, our fear is we may not be able to sustain, sustain our school district unless we have an emergency manager." I wish we could find the person with the helping hand, and I wish that hand held a million or two dollars. That would be, that would be great. Why are you trying to balance the budget on the backs of teachers and support staff? That's the question. It's eighty to eighty-five percent of our operating budget is staff. It's a reality of life. I think I've answered some of the already, actually, a couple of board, board questions. Again, you know, who's, who's responsible for this? You know, y'all are. That's sort of the reality. I mean, we all have a little bit of ambivalence. You, you do elect the board to represent it. The board does hire the superintendent, the staff, and all. But, but ultimately, yeah, it's, it's everybody. We all have a little skin in this game. So that's why I encourage you to, to really stay positive, stay focused on what, what more can we do at this point? Because simply stewing about the past really, it, it won't help. Let's see. What is the money being spent on? How do we get in debt? Here's, here's a, I think I've answered a couple of these. What's the money being spent on? I've mentioned, you know, it's a lot of it is staff and a school budget. And then if, if the school closes early, where would our kids go? That is a question that has come up repeatedly as well, not only nights like this, but phone calls from, from everybody across the state. The answer is, we're not focusing on that. Do I have an answer? The answer is in the Revised School Code, Section three eighty point one-two. If a school district dissolves, the ISD Board determines where kids will go. How would you like to be an ISD board member? You know, we're, we're having conversations, as many of you know, I met with the board presidents and superintendents and vice presidents of, of the other districts just to keep them informed as well, just in the wild chance that something terrible would happen. And when I met with them, I want to share this with you. When I met with them, we had real concerns at that time, that, that that could happen this year, that school could close early. Now again, what we're doing, what we've done in the last six weeks is we've worked with so many different people at the state level to try and not let that happen. And, and we're going to continue working. So I'm more confident today than I was even just a few weeks ago. So that may not answer the question specifically, but just know that it will be determined by the ISD Board. How they decide that, I, I don't know. And I'm not counting on that, folks. I'm focusing on the positive. What's done with the residents paid twice a year? I think that's probably tax money that you're talking about. School funding is really complicated. About, most of the school funding now, operating budget, comes from the state. If you remember back in nineteen ninety-three, those of you who are old enough to remember back that far, there was a school district in northern Michigan, Calcasas, that closed in the springtime before the end of the school year. And they closed because at that time, that school district could not pass a millstone to sustain a school program. So the superintendent said, "We have run out of money. We're closing our doors. Kids, summertime begins in April." And the next day, CNN, NBC, ABC, CBS, The Washington Post, The New York Times, Time Magazine, Newsweek, they were all at the superintendent's door. It became national news. So as a result of that, the following year, the state legislature said, "We have to fund schools differently than we're funding them now." And so what has happened since then was Proposal A, that was put before the people, and that raised the sales tax to six cents on the dollar. And that's how schools have been funded since then. Now, the gentleman who asked the question, or lady that asked the question about their business, some businesses help support the school district in their taxes, but so do you as residents. So all of that money goes into keeping the school running. Who's in control of paying the bills? That has changed. What has happened, one of the decisions by the board was to move the finance department under the auspices of the ISD. So Marius Demetrio, Marius, stand up if you would, please. Yeah. I am going to embarrass you. Marius, many of you have seen or read in the newspaper about Marius. Marius is our chief financial officer for the intermediate school district. He consults with all of the school districts, the, sometimes the charter schools, the non-public schools, to give them support financially. Marius and his staff are working now to, to pay the bills and to control the finances. And, and we're going back and making sure that all the pieces are in place. So hats off to Marius. I think chronically calling him on this. He's done so much in these last six weeks. And he's not getting paid for it. Maybe he's not getting paid by the Heights. This is a question- This is a question about our, our loan from the state. I said that school finances are very complicated. Our fiscal year starts on July 1st, the state's fiscal year starts on October the 1st. During that period of, a quarter of the fiscal year, school districts have to typically go out and borrow money just to pay bills and to keep things going. So, Meskeen Heights has borrowed $7.9 million from the state of Michigan, and we have a responsibility to pay that back. The payment scheduled for that was based on the number of students who were attending the Heights, and that has changed. So we're going to receive less revenue, but we still have that large amount to pay back. So that's a bit problematic. I think you read Lynn Morris, or some of you might have read Lynn Morris' column that said that the Department of Treasury has said that they may have to take money out of the revenue that's coming into the district to pay back that loan, and that's true. That has not happened yet, and one of the things that we're doing is working with the Department of Treasury and all of the leaders of the state Department of Education and the Department of Treasury, to make sure that we can pay those loans back. So that's the behind-the-scenes thing that's happening. We're going to take a few more, I know it's about 7:17, do you mind if we go a few more? Is that okay with you guys? Okay, we're not going to be too long, but, because after we do this for a while, some of you start falling asleep. If you would have done some eliminations, would we be in more debt by the end of the year? You know, I think that's a question about downsizing again, just as businesses have done. It's important for school districts or any organization, even a church, to, to live within their means, and that's what we're having to do now. We'll take this one. When do we expect to hear from MIPSers concerning April and May? We tend to wait until the last minute on sharing information, and at times this is critical for, for parents. MIPSers, Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System. Currently, we owe the retirement system about $1.4 million. Typically, what happens is there is an independent board of people that gather together, and they oversee the retirement funds in the state of Michigan. Dr. Meston was on that board, my predecessor at the ISD. So that board gets together, and they, they look at investments, and they look at, you know, what the, the retirement rate will be charged to school districts. They also, for school districts that owe them a lot of money, they put those school districts on their agenda to talk about, to see what they're going to do about it. Historically, school districts have had money from their state aid garnish. So who remembers how much money comes in state aid each month? Remember what it is? Yeah, very good for you, all right. $950,000, we owe MIPSers $1.4 million. Theoretically, they could take all of our, they're, they're going to meet at March the 22nd, and Meskeen Heights will be on their agenda. They could take all of our April 20th state aid payment, they could take part of the May state aid payment. Do I think that's going to happen? No, I hope not. And why? Because we're working behind the scenes to get the right people, to try and work with them, so that we can get a payment plan in process. So the question is, why do we wait until the last minute to get information? If we don't owe until the last minute, typically, I mean, that's my best answer. I guess that's those.
We're talking to the state, I don't know, have the same kind of way, two weeks, the whole month, or way to sort of hard on the money that they owe.
Yeah, the, sort of, the ending of this question. Has a school district ever waived money that's owed or, or put it off? And the answer is, very, very rarely, because MIPSers, the retirement system is a, is a business, too. They have a fiduciary responsibility to all the 250,000 people in the state of Michigan that are actively in the retirement system, and the hundreds of thousands of people that are receiving benefits. So it's hard for them to say, "Oh, we'll forgive the loan," or "We'll put the loan," or "We'll put the, the amount of money off." So the, the hard answer is, we're, we're in a tough spot, but we have so many people working behind the scenes to do just what you had asked. Can we work with these people to get them to put some of the payments off? We're going to try and do that, continually do that, we've had some success right now. Folks, it's, it's about 7:25 right now. I didn't answer all your questions tonight, I'm sure, but hopefully I touched on a lot of things, and if you, if you have more questions, we are going to, and that we haven't got to, we are going to answer those questions on the website. And I will be around for a while to, to speak to you individually as well. So I want to thank you for coming tonight, I want to thank Mrs. Curry and the staff of the high school for hosting us, I want to thank Pastor Greer, Judge Pittman for sharing their thoughts with us, and even thank the media for being here, because they tell our story as well. Thank you so much.